My call order, Bellville Board of Commissioners Regime meeting Monday, January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, six-thirty P M. Where we start our formal business, I'll open out a moment, so I forget two of our resident people passed away the past week. One of them is Mr. Richard James Sullivan, and a lot of them is Mr. Solomon. He's in the garage there at Sam's Beer Shop, the rest are in our old downtown area, been there for a very long time. He's been, uh, he's four-time resident pretty much from twenty years in, uh, the house camp. He passed January fourth, twenty-twenty-two, he's thirty-seven years old. But we'll remember him, uh, as a member of our community. Down with Buddy Ginn. I don't have, uh, all the details on Buddy, but when you serve, it's gonna be right now, but Buddy passed away. He was a former commissioner of the town of Bellville. He owned the business right here on Blackwell Road, his own family, and I call it, and the family's been here for a very long time. People are pretty much helping build, they're being taught, and that's what it's all about. Older man here in this area. We all think about their families, keep them in talks, pray their prayers, and still we get out from the cloud all day on their way. Thank y'all for that, uh, for the people, uh, who are here, uh, we'll have all them placed out, uh, first or anything else. Get that in place, make sure we can get that, the future family, uh, both of them, uh, once in any long time. You know, uh, I, but they were well. Okay, good night, thanks for the education, uh, please, please, bless. Let's pray to say we follow the Lord, we want the Christ, and we follow the blessing of God, give them food, weather, front we have, and Lord we come. We have to let all the people in the law that we pass, those that are sitting forward whatsoever. The Father we have, keep giving the captain, the leadership tonight, make the best decisions for the people and the family, but pray he may always be proud of us. Thank you, this is like, uh, the United States of America, and to the Republic, to which we stand. One thing, one time, thank you. Thank y'all. Thank everybody for being here tonight, um, that's kind of rough, we see him, uh, this area here is right north central law office. But the most people on the ground here, any ice, any snow, anything that gets around, it's a major thing. Uh, we're a four-man, um, area, didn't have any problems, uh, playing in life, but that's a mission in that place. I'm gonna brush, just to do that, you know, make like if there was a place, uh, a lot of people stayed off the road, uh, since, uh, practice. That burdened that morning, uh, watching the roads, uh, trying to get our family, we were much getting, having problems, uh, and thank you for that. Yeah, see, they're coming down, down a little bit, please, please, get your clothes back. All time, for things, yeah, but hopefully it will work. Okay, moving on down to I'm free on the agenda, approve this candidate, commission, and I have my team, who look over. The agenda, and the, and the presentation. Not that I have a motion that we approve it, uh, before that, I make one change on the agenda. There's many men, but, uh, we break, uh, the water, they lost, then agenda. So that one change that I don't have a motion to, we said, then then start. All the things, uh, on the, uh. Okay, moving down to our, uh, so keep. Prove it, uh, it's agenda. Now we got this look over this agenda, uh, no changes, position, without which we expect to attend. All the things, uh, I, I, I. Moving on to five, uh, we take the three, four, we have one position coming open, uh, that's where, that was, uh, in the position. We have a applicant that has a five. Three applicants, uh, if he's due, George Tom Crawford, the president of the building. We have looked at, uh, all the applications, any comments, any mission about the nation, where? Okay, if they're not, uh, if each applicant will actually say anything, uh, unless it's coming across, press the board. The problem might come after, yeah. Well, I, I, just, uh, four times, identified with the main story, uh. It's Thomas Thomas, everybody talk to all, so, uh. Certainly one of, why we have, uh, was, uh, Thomas Thomas. And why we have, uh.
How's the operation for the rest of this, this water, and possibly seeing, you know, the, uh. I think, uh, five two, how is, now working on that day. And I look, I talk to, uh.
That's, uh, well, uh, man, these things, my day, my day, uh, we were, uh, taking that down, taking, uh, my time, work. They, uh, um, they, uh, they have one more, one more, uh. Also, my stuff on sale now, and that's, um, so, uh, and, uh, that's, that's one month, two months, seven, seven months, we're paying. But thank you, uh, thank you. Look over all that case, uh, maybe, uh, just one of these fall time. Or, uh, all right. We don't fix one, fix, still, please. Not select, we're three days, put in that case. So, uh, eight, five, we have a lot of different, uh. Being mayor, I believe, he all, I make my name, uh, my name, put on there, all my name, because he's, you know, for the, uh, the, the county. That's good, uh, here, I, here, uh, for, uh, for, uh, for our town, our sale. And saying, like, the good things about our end, the conditions, I wish we could get, uh, more people on board. Appreciate, uh, your plan, uh, just, uh, by people, uh, with, uh. I'm, but that, I'm, uh. With my, I would say, I, and I, of those. I think that's what the fair would say for the other two applicants, you guys definitely need qualifications, uh, you know, the, the test is through the sun, lock, or, or maybe three-four dollars, first, but, um, yeah, people, uh. They come off at twenty, twenty-three, or, uh, twenty-four, so, I would first, you must, uh, apply here. Please, uh, look next to reapply, uh, need this face, I want to see a y'all, uh, thank you so much.
And I'll, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll, again, as well, yes, please consider the future as well, and reapply, and, uh, get it out, get that one going, get that one. Yeah, so, and that's it. That's better, that's, uh, uh.
Let's see, if you come forward, please, one, like, you, sir. All, uh, one, yeah. The Father's word allows the fourth and mainland constitution, the laws of the United States, and the constitution of the laws of North Carolina, and this, there we is, that I was facing discharge, these are ours, for the members, eighty-three more, for the town of Bellville, uh, uh. We also did another conference about that, uh, we look for. We'll move down to six presentation, uh, six page, it's one, 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 six, that's a year budget of member.
... With this new system, we're very open and we can start with me if you will. Uh, so what we did is we wrapped the same old idea, we took every type of boat we had and tried to see if we could bring it from around those areas, boat yardage, around the park, bring it up to land and down and everything. We had several these to project, so we put it there. It wasn't public, and that's all called, uh, I don't know what we did. Almost first. Uh, but we were able to launch singles by ourselves. We, uh, we were about, uh, in the sixteen, it's going through two. That third one, we ran it and came out there and just approached and watched. Uh, we were able to bring our children down with a little bit of open experience and we bring it around the same depth. Quite a different story, it was a long boat, thirty nine feet long. A real guy. However, what we figured out was if we changed, well, probably what we did because most of our members are by group. They're cubs, we build cubs, put boats on, people live there. So what we did is we modified some of our cubs to raise them, so that we can actually swing the boat around over the ground. It worked out very well, again, it was a small boat. Uh, the other consideration has four, what is it, a whole profile of women, uh, people for boats. Uh, what we, we talked to Jeff and E D G O and talked to kind of the things that we need to do to be like especially the national state. Uh, both for our people to launch and to come back as well as, uh, the friends who are not necessarily familiar with it. And, uh, so that's some more of the graphics that we did on the dock. And basically what, uh, we came up with for this is, uh, Red Hill's, uh, ten by six muggles. The offload then is the order, the length of an American boat is either nine and a half or twelve feet. So when they come in, they can't extend the order because the, uh, it's not long enough to see. The, uh, all of those, you have to be where everybody was out, this dog out back, these dogs are swift, so. We managed, you know, we have some experienced people who can just enable that. Ideally, we just widen the load so people can help us more if they bother us or look for that. That's kind of what we think muggles is, right now it's six feet wide, you add another section of four, and then two more at the end. We really wanted to do more at the end because in the past, we've still got the U M C Ws, they're very long, their boats were close to fifty feet long. So we need a long enough dock so that all the people can get out of the boat and in the boat. And we figured out to add another ten foot length, which is quite. So when all was gone, we got to add six more of these ten by six boats that went to take the rest of the city. And basically, based on what, uh, Jeff and E D G O said, it was probably what we did. The one change, uh, which would have to happen is at the very end of two, I think it's called a contest, or I would say. We'd have to relocate one of them so we could add that extra boat. The battery there was made is, we just launched all of those, we no problem, no, no serious, uh, danger. And it's wide enough so now we can bring in some new people and have them come in and getting in and out of boats. One of the things about what we call Run, Run for Run, is in first getting the boat, the user boat, and we pull them back and forth and out of it, we want to ruin, we want to ruin it for you in the end. So we're quite, uh, I mean, this, with this change, to be honest, I think it's going to have to set, uh, non-organize dot com, dot. Started to add some other folks from other clubs and other clubs of state taking a look at this because one of the things we want to do back, we have to be able to have a couple of dollars. It's the only thing to express this. So, that'll know then, let's give our feedback on it. I really appreciate what you've talked about. I think he told us that each quarter, so six times, I think he said it was twenty five or twenty eight hundred dollars. Uh, we're going to share an act of law, this is an initiative, um, we've always thought our partners, we've been very good at the ones, you know, the partners, we also, uh, we call our best. We call our best, yeah. Both teams, we've got our folks, we've been happy to have a discussion, some comments.
Okay, well, uh, it's a dead, I don't like this, you know, or dead. Well, nine of God on the table there, I think he has, like, he's set up a lot of things to call. I have a greeting there, I have a thing there, right? Let me sit down, let me, um, stop, I think, uh. Okay, we work these out, we're promising to do that. I think, uh, I, once, uh, I was, uh, working, uh. That's me, tonight, or it'll be over six, ten, month, let's get it together. People come back and just, man, both. That's the point. Now, look, that would definitely, uh, I'll say, I'll say, I, I'll both, I'm, uh. With William, sir, yeah, William, that's the reason we set up.
All right, okay.
Okay, next on the, uh, hundred and six, please, retail, seven, Miss Laura, thank you. Greenfield. Come up, uh, nice to hear the night, uh, very well, through all the bad weather we had.
Yes, sir, I, yeah, I like to sit there watching pretty much, uh.
Lord, your man.
And I understand what you mean, but I'm. I'm still now, but. Um. So, uh, on retail, yes, I, I hope that I sent out some information, that's, you know, um, some, some, uh. Um, company policy that's fed, you could read that top down, maybe, uh, you know, possible priorities.
Also, we do have a new packet, is a memo that gives us a review of what we're getting ready to talk about as well. Um, so, there are several social media platforms that do and could work for the town of Valdo. You've probably heard of most of these, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, YouTube, LinkedIn, and we also keep in contact with the town newsletter. And then there is also Nextdoor. There's a next slide please. So, um, for Facebook, Martin started to take over the Facebook posting on November the 1st. So where did the team start in, um, and started working with the town and trying to create that presence on Facebook? And Carl, our senior project manager, he has a lot of the social media work at us, pulled some information as far as the town's Facebook. And we have done, as far as we do, Martin said, done about fifty-five posts for the town, uh, about twenty-three hundred Facebook likes. Uh, there's usually about ten new followers per month. And so, uh, largest engagements are the news posts. So it's either, uh, you know, moving out of the park, or, um, somebody has lost their dog, or something that seems to be very, very personal, um, to the residents in the area. The main reaches are almost eleven hundred people. And as far as the audience, uh, definitely used more females than males. Uh, the majority of the users are between thirty-five and forty-four individuals. And sixty-two percent of the viewers live in either Cleveland, Willington, or Valdo. And as far as the usage concerns, what we've been using that platform for primarily is to post the board commissioner meetings. So we'll, Carl will go, she'll take the video from our meeting tonight. And she will go in, she will add, um, like I have this public page, so at the beginning of the video, it'll show the date of the meeting. And then, you know, if there's anything else that needs to be added along the way, she can, you know, put those subtitles in. And then once that, the editing is done with that, and she'll upload it to YouTube, which there is a YouTube link, of course, at any chance. Um, there's not a lot of followers on the town YouTube channel, but there is an opportunity out there, you know, who are posting on Facebook, to include the YouTubers. Um, and there's other opportunities as well. And then Content Contact, um, Content Contact is a, uh, facility, as you know. Where you can go in there and you can create a newsletter that goes out to the town. And so every month, Carl and I, we all work together to pull together this newsletter. And it goes out, and it'll have, you know, letters from Mayor Allen, um, these are usually going by, some data some stores, you know, if it's the holidays, the events are coming up, um, the town meetings, et cetera. Uh, but the nice thing with Content Contact, it has an address book, um, inside of it. And so you can push that newsletter out, because everybody's in that address book. Um, something else that's nice about Content Contact, is it does have the power to take a social media post. So if you wanted to post something on Facebook, you could actually, actually push it out to Facebook and Instagram at the same time. And then that way, people can see that on both platforms. Um, and as far as the Content Contact newsletter, uh, here's a little part here, showing, um, how that newsletter audience has grown. Uh, this was something we started taking over, I believe, in two, maybe in the last year. And, um, since we have, uh, the number of people that are in that address book has increased by thirty people, the open rate. So when you post in your email box, if you choose to open it, um, that's thought of six percent. And then if there's a link in there, like, um, you know, followers didn't want to mention about moving out, another people that are crazy on that has gone up, um, about four percent. We are getting a little bit more traction with the Content Contact newsletter. So there are other platforms, um, in which we could expand this social media reach. There's Instagram, Twitter, LinkedIn, and Nextdoor. And currently on Instagram, uh, this town does not post very much, but when they did post, I think the last post was the Riverwalk rally that they were running. That was in July of last year, that one got fifty-one likes. Uh, so there's a little bit of traction there, not a whole lot, but also got a lot of activity all there as well. Um, but again, you know, with Instagram, you do have the opportunity to cross post this through Instagram and Facebook, and I definitely see the opportunity to increase, uh, that traffic. And then, of course, there is, well, there's a couple more. Um, there is Twitter, and Twitter's plan seemed to operate a little bit well at a back-to-back or back-and-forth conference agency. Um, I am honestly not sure, I think we have a, we do have a Twitter account. We haven't really done a whole lot going with that, so I look at that as also another opportunity. And then LinkedIn, the town does have a LinkedIn page, but again, not a whole lot of the middle there as well. Uh, when I look at some of the other, um, towns that did LinkedIn pages, honestly, what I wa, I see a lot of is, um, job posts and emails. So in my opinion, I would say, out of those platforms, LinkedIn, um, would maybe be your, your bottom priority as far as spreading news about what the town is doing, how it's getting involved, um, et cetera. And then, um, I believe you brought up the fifty, we're seeing a lot of the two of the two of the things Nextdoor. And so that would be another, um, good app, another platform that we could look into, and see what the opportunity is, or just push that information out. And just then look into, you know, different neighborhoods, have different, um, Nextdoor pages in different areas. So we should look into, um, telling it to move forward with that one as well. So a few other things that we do have in progress. Uh, we are pulling together a social media handbook. And this is like a how-to document for town staff, it's really made to be internal. And the, the jokes that I always tell of being a, is that I, if I'm the moderator, and looking thing out, would you guys be able to maintain all of your social media data? Out by the waters, it's not hard. Um, so this will be something that will be used internally, and then that way, you know, if somebody's gonna run some stuff, and somebody needs to learn all the Facebook data, everything is new. You do the name and password, um, how to do a post, even in Facebook, there's a, an ideal image size. And it'll tell you what that ideal image size is, so you can make, um, really good posts. But that's something that we're building each one of the. And then, oh, that's a long story. And then for the social media policy and focus, we looked at a few other agencies that have, uh, the social media policy. And there's things in there like, um, the, um, the town management, sort of humanizing top of the force. But there's also rules and there's frameworks, and how do you use social media as a public input, you know, process? If we are, you know, having a public meeting, how specific projects, if somebody shows up on Facebook and says, hey, I wanna sign in, how do we incorporate that as a part of the public input process? And then, you know, there's some that you wanna ask on there. So there's a lot of things going on, so I agree, and you wanna make sure that your tone, those methods are appropriate for the town's case. So, um, all of that is included there as well. And then the other thing that I brought up, um, was, we might wanna work on some branding guidelines. Um, so if you look at the town of Valdo, that's what's on this slide, uh, one thing that I love about it, we have type of watercolor in the water, it's got several different, um, tones of blue. But something we could do is we could take the specific blue and the specific green that the town wants to go, and, you know, get it down to the R G B and the C O Y K colors. And we can string on that all the way through. And then, when you're posting on Facebook, for example, about this meeting, you'll have the last post have a, um, like a dark blue square. And it kind of triggers you visually, when you see that dark blue square, I'll hope they don't see that in your town meeting. And it's the same dark blue color, and it's the kind of visual piece that people will see, as if it's continuing to post online. You can also take that another step further, and include those colors in other documents that you have, um, around town as well. So that's something else we're working on as well. And then, uh, the last thing that Carl and I did, is we went down and we thought about, you know, what would our action items be moving forward? So, we can adopt some branding guidelines, so this will be super detailed, um, but we can get that started. Um, we can discuss boosting posts, so we can boost your Facebook posts to get a greater reach. Uh, we have not been boosting posts in the last few months, and that has gone down a little bit, so there's been one boosting there earlier. Um, there's also the Facebook quarterly reports, so looking at this memo, at how many people are, you know, following the town on Facebook, and everything you can do with the quarterly reports, so you can see that those numbers are improving. And then, of course, you know, we can bump off the Instagram project by post posting. Um, and we can talk about, um, how to, uh, you know, discuss the social media presence on Twitter and LinkedIn. And then, like, if you wanna focus on Facebook and Instagram first, and make that the top priority, and then just do, uh, Twitter and LinkedIn as the second priority. Um, there's several reasons on what your priorities are. And then, as far as increasing traffic on the town's YouTube page, again, more cross-reversing, but how do you wanna go about driving those people to that YouTube page? And then, of course, you wanna finalize the social media handbook, and the social media policy, and the media. So taking all of that into consideration, why don't we are in draft mode with several approved, um, documents? Then that's our ideas, suggestions, or guidance.
I have a question, because this is something I'm interested in. I'm not yet. I'm afraid it's pretty relatively intuitive, um, your life, I have to. I'm happy, happily, you do all that. Um, but I, I am definitely one of my best clients. Yeah, that's, that's the, the next one, is to see a lot of track. Well, I'm not too into it, but I see a lot of, of the town's, um, people pretty much, they're, they're, the, uh, public relations person, that the town doesn't make. It's posted on. And it's a lot of track, eventually. Um, YouTube, I agree with you, I think, on the deal line. Definitely try to get the actual meeting to launch that blog, or do this, or the, or the, to get access to it. People want, YouTube a lot, everybody can, you know, keep all, you know, and it's a rich format, YouTube, which right on. So, um, I'd, I'd, Content, Content, I'm a big fan of content, and I started the newsletter. Yeah, I could go on and on, but maybe we'll stop here. For, for, I'm not, I'm, um, front of myself. Um, actually, you can follow up handbook. Um, policy, social media policy, that's no question. Your guidelines, make sure that, uh, focus, focus on. I like the policy, my own, um, I'm, I'm, or actually, I think that's, I'm. I'm happy to go to that, I'm happy to help with anything. It's, we need to get that, 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 um, it needs to, um, it needs to look harder on, you know, and, and, over the population, we have a lot of young people, um, that, um, that, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, I'm pretty sure he played on his own here to play me up and I was looking at him today. Five boards up in the main down there. Three, five, eight, nine, ten. I think he's kicking that out here in the lobby. He's got a good way of getting serious with me. Put them all in the picture and watch live things. Got four plays on that real fun. Uh, so. Good night.
Yeah, I'll add that to my list.
I think I'll done it. I'm very weak on social media and I try to stay away from trucks like me. Stay here. Good role. Aaron.
One last question if you don't mind that he's been in the board. He said the A D C board has an opportunity to do an exception because over the past weekend, we came alive and I posted on Xtra, posted on Facebook, the hours that we were open, different for New Orleans County Day, Royal Springs. We'd like to take that opportunity to develop as much as possible. We can have a type product. It's a lot, but we can tell you about deliberations and the truck is coming in on Tuesday. We could do tomorrow. Uh, hours of operation. This is that's it.
Really hard for you to say, say, or say, oh, say, Madonna. Yeah, and I. Everything is broken. Absolutely.
Whatever requests for hiring and if we collect our tour. We got sixteen and we're moving forward.
Absolutely, yes, guys. I've always given you all some time.
Like it.
I'll put it this way.
Okay, I was one of the out of seven old business. I'm trying to make that now for our third wall project and. Do you? Some part? Um, do you want to drive a car in the rain? Would you get it off? I didn't check that up. Uh, just comment about, um. That they don't run through. Um, and we know the production that they can use in a warmer weather. They can be used by this weekend and they closed the park for two days because of the ice. We'll be back up on Sunday. No damage. We had no three units down. Um, everything was. What is it called? Better than I expected, um, going in there on Sunday and everything. Um, we have a movie night coming up. We've got a ski raid coming up. Uh, fashion day come up in May, so there are a lot of stuff in the fire right now. Um, parts left for playing. I'm actually being all right with them today. I think, um. You know, the COVID cases, and they're nice to have. We're taking people from certain variants of COVID. Still have the influence on them, but I find that's the same. I'm Texas, big on special. I'm in progress on that one. It's down by. Looking at the case of my beer. Tracked. Team. Yes. That. All your gift card, it means that's great. Uh, uh, every day I'm trying out. So I think. But that's, uh, just what the world, our content plays in. Back to COVID. Uh, everyone basically, so they're just not. We have a few back. All right. What happened? He's, uh, uh. Uh, more factor. He's back up. In fact, more can lock the way for two years. Four back. Go down and look at our book rent. Did you? Uh, pick up? Read the information and get that there, space to our guys. And one probably. Got. Building with both. Now. Here's the smaller. That might. So maybe you will need to get out. Get other. Like them. Okay, no other comments, we'll move on to these free repairs and bring repairs up there. First of all. Well, I've been a part of. There before with the air. Not determining that timing, they tried to work out doing repairs on. The first floor, uh, the first level back. Very ready. They were, uh, potentially working on the air, uh, back there as well. Uh, making up some of the. Ten percent. Uh, they kind of hit roadblock that commercial. Moving forward with the protection on very early. They, I don't know how much this was discussed at the meeting, uh, hotel amongst each other down. Then there. Uh, they've gotten the moving company to do some plans for all this work. Uh, just cause I'm tired of working. Those are doing also done by moving company. Also tricked four more on that for all this work. Needs all the stuff then. See the requirement one more. As the generalize this happens. Don't have a great sense of what they're trying. If they, um. That makes great of mine. I know they're looking at, uh, thirty four and they say go. They're trying to push this out of place in a lot of. Uh, real fun. Um, we'll be sure we can have our areas there to look at. Obviously, that's like. But we want to go forward with it. Backo Road on the front of that hill. Trying to get some additional plumbing or something, uh, business on the rear. But now they're trying to work through. That may work. The other conversation we heard will be approved. Paid with proof. Still, we've got rest of back of the road. Each color. Which part is not going to be built on that side. In the red solid. Some part. Uh. Kind of looking forward to keeping a garden on this. Okay, they they first stand. Dude, that has made a standard, uh, so like I told them. That's where, uh, they. They brought roads. Standards we can like things. Uh, not like also help the quarter on people that are for. Of all of. For our business model. By saying maintain those. Looking forward to, uh. Started on that. Yeah, we know. Please don't help me. Doesn't make a lot of sense. We're kind of approaching all the. But, uh, whether for like the first thing to get back to the. That would. That's. Now, uh, that's. Incredible. Then for that. Yeah, I mean. About the one or seven, please. Run it through that. They have to thank y'all for y'all do. Yeah, like it's a very, very dear year for the same. Mark. Uh, firstly, that. So. Stay calm. So. We'll move on to this agenda to, uh, take the regular agenda. Take, take good and the trend. Take the plan.
Uh, so this is, um, yeah, no doubt. For this town, this one will also be, uh, used more internally. And this one is, um, for a safety program and in this, uh, we're having, it will have, um, safety. Thank you. So we're, uh, we're calling this policies and guidelines, um. Okay, so are some things in here that are mandated by the state, uh, to ensure that policy. And there's other things in here that would be, uh, guidelines and suggestions for creating a, uh, safe and work environment. Let's go along to the. Uh, so it's the North Carolina Department of Labor that says that once you have eleven employees status triggers for requiring a, um, safety plan essentially, uh, for the workplace. And that applies to both, um, your local jurisdiction, but it comes along as well as, um, as a system as well. Um, one of the fundamental, um, safety guidelines that the town, um, since it's a type of place is that there really is no path that is so important that employing a pilot is incapable or take a risk of injury or illness to keep it a job from. And that being a foundational understanding of this, um, of this document. And so far, we'll get into, uh, the three different criteria. Uh, that obviously have eleven more employees and look at their safety plans to see exactly what it involves. Uh, there are some that are ten years long and there are some that are ninety. So keep that in the dirt, um, this. And as you can imagine, those also reflect the number of employees, but that is either responsible that you, you know, when you have employees that are operating, um, you know, guard structures, heavy machinery. And a lot of. Uh, but we did work, um, the, the North Carolina Labor Department of Health and Food Systems for developing, um, this plan. Which is probably sitting about fifty percent, um, safe right now, and that's if you guys do that. Um, so again, it's the North Carolina Department of Labor that is, uh, regulating this, of course, um, you know, they want to see indoor, um, employee safety plan. They should have safety, healthy conditions, um, you're paying and properly using safety witness and. And you're consulting with and while the employees are guarding, uh, safety and health. And that applies to new brand and new employees, but also our regulations for the senior employees. And then making sure you keep records of injuries, illnesses, uh, for proper volume which in the correct. And, uh, of course, as you imagine, there are benefits of having these employee safety health programs for any future injury, the illness. I improve morale. Improve productivity, reduces direct and indirect workers compensation costs. And also really talks of retraining employees. And then so on this next slide, I know this is a little bit difficult to read and see it better, um, in here, but this is our draft, uh, Google content. For this, and again, this is sitting at about fifty percent completion. But this is an opportunity to hear if you guys are starting with any thoughts of the actions invited to complete. Uh, but we do have, um, a lot of things covered in this plan, uh, so far as to what is in that. So it includes everything from employee responsibilities, uh, P D P, which I still have these days on I C P D as a day pass. Uh, but that goes with making sure that people have the right closing, the, uh, right, um, attire, field form, uh, results. To who went back to individual employees and workers who are operating heavy machinery, you know, maybe certain shoes or boots that they need. And I just think about that. But also part of this, uh, we're going to, since you want to get that eleven, um, important threshold. You do need to have someone who is actually leading this entire effort. And you do need an employee who's safety committee. And you get into these formal responsibilities for what, you know, the family unit is responsible, it may be or safety forehanger and the safety committee and how often they need to meet and what they need to do. Um, so all that is included in the plan as well. Um, and also record keeping, um, maintenance when you get into, you have a lot of footrests. Maintenance schedule for reporting your non-need to do footrests. Um, so, um, so lots of stuff like that just into, um, into this plan, so along with the next two lawsuits. So as far as our next steps for developing this, um, we want to continue work closely with N P L M to review the documents. Um, we'll take what we're thinking, the way this process will work out. And we're going to take, keep working with N P L M, they're going to sign out on the rest of this document once we get it to about nine, five percent. Uh, we would like to bring it back to this board. Uh, pulling in, you know, other ideas, suggestions, comments, make sure you guys take a good look at it. And then once we have input from you, we're going to go back to N P L M and say, hey, we presented this to the board. This is, we've got that input, we've received from the town. So we're going to want to get it in with the legal, get this handled quickly. And then you will have our final, um, safety print, safety program finalized at the board meetings following that. Uh, depending on N P L M and their timelines, um. See the next two or three months. And then any questions for? Talking then?
Probably, uh. Something I think. Every day. Safety. Uh, safety. Where you go. Safe. Every time that's been on. Long time. Like you're supposed to thank. Always program. Of time. Won't be sure if they mess up. I know it's happened for real. Sheriff and they think very close to us. Practice, uh, basically. So that's. Yeah, I'll make comments. Basically, I'm very practical. Sheriff of very drawn towards. Thousand two thousand. And talk to him. But good, uh. Off. I. And. Follow. All in. Where. Program. Twenty six. Always. Get on me. Leaving my, I have to say. Full program every year. Working sheriff office. And this. That. But. And, uh. Right. Sixty four. Like, um, like a lot. In places. Also, uh, they'll be true. My tail is, uh, all the time. The one. When we get there. First thing. Or you go. And talk about, uh, first, uh, place. It's not good.
Absolutely, I do want to, you know, submit this to them this town for thinking about this ahead of time and seeing if they're not creating anything. We do this, but thinking about it ahead of time, that is the time, um, to create. But I want to be a really user-friendly document, you know, if there's a, a form that needs to be submitted on Eagle Bay, just always be real fine. You know, continue your best play. Um, all things involved and important. Like the other one, we'll be working on this one and, uh, if you guys update this.
Thank you. Any more comments?
I'll do.
My first work. Not here, uh, we. Great. Be aware. I mean, I'm placing this A D for preparation. Like. I'm sorry. Favor. All those. All the big things. That they. Make that move. Your team affected. I was trying to tell y'all we did. W M P O is based there. They want to. Control everything that's going on in the free funding system project. Still kind of in the space right now. And so we have projects that are coming up here in town, uh, this year. D F C. Already doing surveys out here. Projects, you know, we have two projects, so. Uh, both free. Projects that increase, uh, walking, uh. My parents, women, wives, and children, back down to serve for. Making changes. Looking forward to getting four of your issues. Looks to say a name back there. Projects they're handling in the area. Looks like projects were approved two years ago. Process right now. There's a view of. These projects are not big. Get a lot of funding. Didn't end that correctly. Other question, they were moving on the out of my. I'm working on the, you know, the fat people on forty three that three, that seven, eight, three. All that. They're on the back, look, y'all, y'all looked at it, one of their, uh, which is, uh. Life and growth, you know, part of property, he lived up. D F C didn't repeat all that. Life and growth. Don't think it's on the. Or mission base. On the time, on both, uh, that. Give them that, those things that they're worried, uh, say. What's happening? Come back and open, say, um, on the time, on both, uh, that. So any comments about that?
No, just, uh, that the. Records seem to reflect that we discussed. A four and A five, um. Common development. Community development project and. Got some direction for negotiating for the acquisition of a property. If you actually.
Okay, thanks for that, sir. Comment from the minute. Ma, did I have much to get here?